I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands in its name, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
When we sit down?
We had, when I checked the bank account today, we had eight hundred and ten thousand dollars. I just did payroll, so we'll need to subtract that, but we still have our state foundation funding to come in this month for just two hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. Another thing from the state for ninety-seven hundred dollars. And then from last year, in what current to this year, federal and state owes two hundred and thirty-one thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars.
What's the difference, what's the difference in our foundation money and our payroll right now?
Um, probably about, about a hundred fifty thousand dollars.
So we pay a hundred fifty thousand more than the fountain and the state pays it?
Mm-hmm.
And what, is that a motion for the consent agenda?
I make the motion.
Motion. Do you say it? I have to say my question on the first guy. Closed. Zero. New business work again with our desegregation order update. Uh, we have Cody Keys from Beckett Billingson Key. Uh, he's gonna run through this, the first address and...
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Price. Thank you, members of the board and members of the public. Uh, the district has been in a desegregation case since nineteen seventy, and through that time, it's had, uh, there's been various involvement from the courts and various actions on behalf of the district. And so my job here recently, I've been involved, come on in, you're fine.
Okay, excuse me.
No, no, you're fine. I may be able to find you a seat. Uh, I've been involved as legal counsel since about two thousand and twenty-two, assisting the district in its efforts to become unitary, meaning, uh, that it has met its obligations under the long-running desegregation case, so that the district would be dismissed from federal court oversight. So we're in that process. Uh, again, it dates back to nineteen seventy, um, and at that point, you know, the, the United States Supreme Court had said in Brown v. Board of Education that school districts must unify, you cannot have segregated schools, and that was in the fifties. And through that time, through maybe the fifties and the sixties, England School District had not unified, so it was still operating essentially segregated schools. So in nineteen seventy, the United States Department of Justice filed a lawsuit in the Eastern District, which is Ark, it's Little Rock, essentially alleging you're violating the Constitution, you're violating Supreme Court precedent in Brown v. Board of Education, and you must unify your schools, you must operate a unitary system. And so in that year, they entered into an agreement whereby they would operate, and I say they, I'm speaking of England School District, the board, entered into an agreement where they, they said, we'll operate one elementary school and one high school, and it will house all of our students, black and white students, will no longer have segregated schools. And there was also in the order, and, and we have the order available, it's in a, it's in the print that they had available in nineteen seventy, so it's difficult to read, but, uh, that was the plan. But of course, unitary status is more than just schools, it also involves your faculty, your staffing, and so those pieces remained open. And we had, you know, some, you know, this hasn't been what I'd call a completely active case over the course of fifty-four years, I mean, there's been multiple years, maybe even decades, that it was what I'd called dormant, it was still on the docket, but there was, wasn't being talked about, it wasn't anything that was being brought before the board. Uh, in two thousand and seven, again, this was before my time, but the, the history of the case shows that there was an issue brought to the United States government, the Department of Justice brought to their attention that the district was considering race and the selection of homecoming royalty, king, queen, uh, the, the bearers, other participants, and essentially, that is unlawful because that is a consideration of an extracurricular activity on the basis of race. So the district, in conjunction with the Department of Justice, they, they worked that out, and at least it's my understanding that that practice was stopped. Uh, and then we go along to about two thousand and twenty-two, and this was probably the most significant attempt by the district to go to the court. Again, we're going through many judges, and the judge is not actively looking at this case, but it's on the docket. But in two thousand and twenty-two, the district, in conjunction and coordination with the Department of Justice out of D.C., we filed a motion for unitary status, meaning, you know, hey, judge, court, we believe that we've met all the obligations under the nineteen seventy order that we agreed, and we believe we're operating a unitary school in all, in all areas. And so as part of that, the judge allowed objections and comments from the community, and there were comments and objections received, and the most significant ones related to minority recruitment and retention with hiring. And those are all available, the district has a, has a link on its website where you can go and find all of its updates related to its desegregation efforts. And if you really want to do a deep dive, the court case, and I can provide you that citation as well, and you can go online and, and search for that. We don't have to search hard, it's all available. So essentially, after this, um, there were objections based on faculty hiring and retention. And so the school district, along with the Department of Justice, entered into a consent order, which is essentially meaning, this is what we agreed to, but Judge, and it's the Honorable Judge Brian Miller, would you agree to sign this order? And that, and he did, and so this is, in effect, a consent decree which runs through at least September one of two thousand and twenty-six, and it focuses on the retention, whether the recruitment and the retention of certified staff, and that's staff including administrators and teachers, and maybe some instructionalists. It's essentially everyone that has to have the certification. So as part of this, the district, uh, agreed that for the next two years, we would strongly focus on both the recruitment and retention of African-American certified staff members, ensuring that they know of openings that we have in the district, that they have opportunities to apply, and that we consider their application amongst those others. Uh, we still have obligation to follow Arkansas law in that, you know, we must consider all applicants, and we must consider, uh, based on their qualifications, but we, essentially, as, as Mr. Price will go over in more detail, and, you know, kudos to him, he's very new to the district, and he's picking up something that was well before him, but he's leading the effort now to ensure that we want as many African-American applicants for these positions as possible. He's gonna go over some data with you. So as part of the order, we're going to make, uh, updates, we're going to, um, that's your next slide, but just to overview here, we're going to keep this data, and we're going to file reports, September one, we just filed a report, we're gonna do another one September one of two thousand and twenty-five, and we'll do another one September one of two thousand and twenty-six. And as part of that, we want to present to the public our efforts and get as much feedback as possible. And that feedback will, of course, be considered in our ongoing efforts, um, in hopes that by the time we get to September one of two thousand and twenty-six, and the district goes back before the judge requesting that we be declared unitary and released from the desegregation order case, that the public, uh, in effect, would agree that, you know, that's appropriate at that time. So what we'll do is, uh, Mr. Price will go over some of the logistics of what the retention and recruitment team is doing, some of the metrics, and then we'll open it up for any discussion from the public that, you know, you would like to, you would like to get. Throw it over to you, Mr. Price.
Okay. Uh, this, uh, PowerPoint will be placed online, so you can look at it any, any time, so it will be available. Uh, what we're looking at is the overview of the district's, district's hiring procedures for certified staff. We have an opening for our certified position, which are called COVID positions, uh, it, uh, in our desegregation consent order, we have a comprehensive protocol that we follow. Uh, first, we create a job description that encompasses the major job duties and responsibilities of the open position. The job description is then incorporated into an advertisement, along with some of the benefits of working in our district, and, and a non-discriminatory, discriminatory assurance statement. Uh, once complete, the advertisement is then posted on our website, on our Facebook page, on the AAEA website, and on the AR Jobs website. When applications arrive, I create a file for each applicant. The file includes a completed application, resume, practice scores, or a copy of the applicant's, uh, current license, and three letters of recommendation. The candidate is then vetted through sites such as Core Connect and the Arkansas Educational Licenseur System for licensure accuracy and the preliminary criminal background and child malt treatment check. Once the applicant has been vetted for those reasons, the file is delivered to the appropriate building principal. At the building level, the principal contacts the applicant to arrange an interview date. At the meeting, the hiring committees uses, uses a standardized rubric of questions to discern the applicant's knowledge and suitability for the position. The elementary interview committee consists of Ms. Tammy Bennett, elementary principal, Ms. Mindy Martin, instructional facilitator, Ms. Danielle Williams, elementary teacher. The high school interview committee consists of Mr. Brittany Robinson, principal, Mr. Trent Morgan, principal, Ms. Belinda Livingston, instructional facilitator, Cassie Henderson, high school counselor, Rosemary Benjamin, high school teacher, Brett Mount, high school media specialist, and Hillary Mullins, high school teacher. And a larger number of high school committee members is reflective of the very specialized needs that high school has. Uh, the questions from the rubric are scored, and the scores from the questions are totaled. Once all certified and qualified applicants have been interviewed, the applicant with the highest rubric score is recommended for hire to the superintendent. The superintendent then takes the name of that person to the school board for approval. How and where we, uh, do we advertise these open certified positions? We post them on our, on the district's website, on our district Facebook site, AAEA job site, that's Arkansas Association of Educational Administrators, they have a job site there, and on the AR Jobs website. Those are all the online presence places that we put our, our, uh, advertisements. Uh, how does the district utilize an outreach to the community partners to increase minority staff hiring? In addition to our online job postings, flyers containing our open positions are posted locally. We currently, currently, we post these flyers at the following places, the England Public Library, the England Post Office, England Fitness Center, Real Fish Restaurant. We also post these flyers at the following local churches, Bishop's Chapel Church, Community of Love Church, East Macedonia Baptist Church, Udora Baptist Church, Mount Olive Baptist Church. However, we were asked not to just simply post them, so we began mailing the flyers to the churches instead. How do we track the race of applicants during the application process to, to help identify minority applicants for potential hire? We track the race of all applicants through our certified application form. This form asks the candidate to self-identify his or her race. We then compile the number of candidates of all races in, in a spreadsheet, and by doing this, we can track the race of all candidates who apply, who are interviewed, and who are hired. We do use a standard rubric for hiring. Uh, for each position, we use a standardized rubric that is tailored to each position. The same questions in each rubric are asked of each candidate for a particular position. The answers are scored by each member of the hiring committee and then tallied. The candidate with the highest score is recommended to the superintendent for hire. So who are the members of the district's diverse recruitment and retention team? First, Superintendent Mark Price. Organized and provided yearly training for recruitment and retention team, created and posted job vacancy notices that are EEOC compliant, collected and distributed all received applications and relevant hiring materials, corresponded with attorneys to determine and implement all necessary corrective action regarding recruitment, hiring, and retention. Oversaw actions of the recruitment and retention team to ensure compliance with all hiring mandates. At the high school, you have Principal Trent Morgan, he assisted in creating job interview rubric questions, organized certified and classified interviews for all candidates, he checked references for candidates who have been recommended for hire by the interview committee, he posted job opening flyers in the community, and he will attend the UAPB Fall Career Summit. Also at the high school, Belinda Livingston, instructional facilitator. She contacted the University of Arkansas Pine Bluff, Philander Smith, and Arkansas Baptist to form a recruitment partnership. She contacted Philander Smith and Arkansas Baptist about job openings. She registered team members for UAPB two thousand twenty-four Fall Career Summit and will attend that summit. She attended the University of Central Arkansas Teachers Career Fair. She assisted in creating job interview rubric questions, and she's a member of the interview committee for certified positions. Also at the high school, we have a teacher, Ms. Rosemary Benjamin, she's a member of the interview, of the committee for, the interview committee for certified positions. At the elementary school, we have Ms. Tammy Bennett. She created job interview rubric questions, organized certified and classified interviews for all candidates, checked references for candidates who have been recommended for hire by the interview committee, and she will attend the UAPB two thousand twenty-four Fall Career Summit. Also at the elementary school, instructional facilitator, Ms. Mindy Martin. She will attend the UAPB two thousand twenty-four Fall Career Summit, she's a member of the interview committee for certified positions, and she attended the University of Central Arkansas Teachers Career Fair. We also have at the elementary school, Ms. Danielle Williams, she's a member of the interview committee for certified positions. What training the, did the team members receive over the desegregation plan during the summer professional development? For our July sixteenth administrative retreat, the team received our annual training from Beckett Billingson Key. The training included a desegregation case background, the consent order itself, hiring procedures, including information and instructions on hiring procedures, advertising the position, tracking race through applications, hiring decisions, standardized grade rubrics and record keeping, the creation of a district-wide recruitment and retention team, and the development of recruiting partnerships with historically black colleges and universities. So what's the goal of the team? The goal of the recruitment and retention team is to help identify ways to advertise the England School District and open positions to minority applicants across the state. The district is forming recruiting partnerships with UAPB, Philander Smith College, and Arkansas Baptist College. We've contacted each of these universities in an attempt to create recruiting partnerships with them. Uh, with UAPB, we originally tried to contact them on March fourteenth, we received a response on April twenty-sixth, they informed us that we should attend their career fairs held in spring and fall. We will attend these career fairs and attempt to create a recruiting partnership with UAPB this fall. Philander Smith, we initially tried to contact them on March fourteenth, we received a response on April twenty-fifth stating that their students have already made commitments, but the university would love to partner with them next year, with us next year. And we will attempt to build our partnership with Philander Smith this fall. Arkansas Baptist, we initially tried to contact them on March fourteenth, we received a response on June eleventh stating they would be interested in creating a partnership or MOU with ours and other local schools. I tried to call them on July fifteenth, we got no answer, but we will begin the process of creating a partnership with Arkansas Baptist this fall. What are the district's efforts to retain minority staff? Retention of our minority staff is a very important, uh, to our district. We believe that the Learns Act, which raised the minimum starting salary for teachers to fifty thousand dollars, combined with our four-day work week, presents an attractive package to applicants as well as current employees. These two advantages, as well as our centralized location, will be at the forefront of our recruiting efforts and will remain, will remain a powerful deterrent for those thinking about leaving the district. And what are the results of our efforts over the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year? This is what it's all about. This year, eight classroom teachers and two administrators were hired at England High School. Of these, three teachers and one administrator were African-American. One classroom teacher later resigned before the start of the year to pursue his teaching career in another state. In every position in which a fully certified minority applicant applied, he or she was hired. At England Elementary School, three certified positions were filled. One of these positions was filled by a Hispanic applicant, and only one position did a fully certified minority candidate, other than this Hispanic applicant, apply. This candidate was not chosen by the interview committee as another candidate with more experience and a higher interview rubric score was chosen. However, this candidate was offered another certified position within the district, but declined the job.
Thank you, Mr. Price. So next steps are, uh, in addition to our September filing, we have a February filing with the court, while most likely we would not have conducted any hiring between now and February, that report to the court as well as a report to the public. So I presume that would be the regular board meeting, uh, regular meeting of the England School District Board in February. That'll likely focus more on our efforts and, you know, hopefully we could report successes at that time, attending the various job fairs at our historically black colleges and universities, and reporting back on any good feedback that we received. Uh, and certainly, you know, now's an opportunity for the public to give us feedback because we do have, you know, bulk, we have at least till September two thousand and twenty-six that we're gonna be implementing these processes, and with the focus being on recruiting minority candidates, if you have feedback that could help in those efforts, uh, whether it be attending fairs that we may not know about or outreach, you know, that's, that is part of this, is to consider your feedback so that we can incorporate those changes now, and when we get to the opportunity to go back to the court in two thousand and twenty-six or close thereafter, uh, we'll be able to show, hey, we, we accepted this good feedback and we're able to incorporate that into our plan. So the, the opportunity now is to, um, ask questions or make comments, and it's, it's open to the public per the, you know, the directives that we have in the consent order. Feel free to introduce yourself or provide an address, or if you'd rather not, you know, it's certainly not required, whatever you're comfortable in, comfortable with, uh, so the opportunity, the floor is all yours to speak to the board on any concerns you may have regarding our desegregation obligations.
My name is Dr. Michael Nellum, I'm here representing the Gartrill Alumni Association. I want to introduce our president, this is Beverly Colton Keon, who's a graduate of Gartrill, um, and other members of the Alumni Association are present. We've had an opportunity to review the document and have some concerns, um, about specificity, but I have a question first for counsel, is this going to be a comment, or will you be responding to some concerns that members of the audience might have? Is this group district going to be comment responding?
Yeah, if, certainly if you need a response and we don't have one, I'll make every effort to get that to you, um, and, and try to make sure the public stays informed and knowledgeable, so it may not be something that we can tell you tonight, but we can work to get you the information.
Okay. All right. Now, since there's no podium, I'll just try to stay, and I'll be behind some of you in front of others. Um, we want to start with page one, and there were a hundred and thirty-five pages in your document. Page one dealt with, uh, the administration, the number of certified staff, Mr. Price made a comment about, uh, the number of people that he hired this year based upon the applicants. And I've had some conversation as well. Uh, I find Mr. Price to be a very affable person who is, I think, working to do his job to make sure that this process is fair, so I'll put that out there in the atmosphere first, um, and then I'll criticize, okay? I just wanted to say that. This price, the district has posted that you have a black administrator at the high school, which I'm going to assume is Mr. Morgan here. If that's Mr. Morgan, we've never met officially, but I'll assume that that's Mr. Morgan. But it also says that you have two principals, principal of support services and principal of instruction, I think, so who signs the documents for the state as it relates to compliance issues with the Arkansas Department of Education? The support services person or the principal for instruction?
Either can, uh, as they both have the, they are both considered principals. Uh, it, that usually, that has been falling into, uh, Ms. Brittany Robinson, but, uh, Mr. Morgan certainly can.
Okay. Does Mr. Morgan evaluate as well certified staff?
Yes, he will, he will be in there, he will be in classrooms, yes.
Okay. All right. Because support service, student support services sounds more non-instructional. And also, uh, question number two, uh, you're counting your four secondary admin, uh, four secondary minority employees, including, Mr. Morgan has the administrator, so you have four beside him or four including him?
We have four including him.
Okay. So we have five out of sixty-five certified staff in this district are African-Americans. Five out of sixty, that's about eight percent. According to your records from last year, that would be a three percent increase. Now, according to district documents, there are five hundred and eighty-eight students enrolled in the district. Student population is thirty-six percent African-American, nine and a half percent Hispanic, and fifty-four and a half percent white. At the current rate of recruiting and hiring African-American or minority staff members equal to the African-American student population, and assuming, as you stated, you're working hard to retain those people, it would take about twelve years to reach a black faculty percentage that equates to the student body. Twelve years. And if you hire based upon what the district has brought up over the last decade, it would take you twenty-seven years. So we have some concerns about how much speed and how much effort's going to go into that. You answered one of the questions about teacher recruitment team. Uh, you explained that you had an in-service, I saw a signage sheet, but we didn't see any minutes, no time scheduled. You said you had it during the district's retreat?
Yes.
And the law firm conducted the in-service for the recruitment team, is that correct?
Yes, and the, the PowerPoint that we went over is available, I have it, I think it's on the website.
We saw that, about fifteen pages. Uh, how long did the in-service last, Mr. Keys?
Probably an hour.
An hour, okay. All right. Further down in the court in the submitted update, there's a reference made to Superintendent Price engaging in correspondence with the district's attorneys to determine and implement all necessary corrective action regarding recruitment, hiring, and retention. So the law firm created the retention plan?
Oh, no, no. So the, the Department of Justice, um, in, in conjunction with the district, and largely it was probably, I, I think the Department of Justice would say they were the driving force, because when we went up for unitary status and there were objections, then, fair to say, the Department of Justice said, hey, we need to make, we need to agree on a path forward. And so the Department of Justice, which is a party with the district, created a retention and recruitment plan, and our, my sole position was to just ensure that the team knew what the order said, and to instruct them, ensure they knew, hey, this is what the order requires of you as a team, and this is your marching orders pursuant to the order, and here's, here's what you gotta do.
So, so you're training this committee of these people that you've chosen as a district, from the district? It looked like about eight or ten people had been on that signage sheet. They get one hour worth of in-service per year? Is that the plan?
Uh, they, that, I mean, they get the same in-service that all other teachers get, but yeah, it's fair to say, the plan, you know, which is outlined in the order, that was about an hour to review that plan, and I think I, I left, and we answered every question, I think we left knowing they all felt that they knew what the marching orders were. And then, you know, we'll be back, I believe I've got the order, I believe it's an annual, I believe it's an annual training, and so we would, at that, when we come back, it'll be, hey, what worked, what didn't work, and may need to enlist, you know, we could, we could brainstorm and say, hey, you know, our recruitment efforts, we want to beef those up, so we may need to look at something else to help in that area.
But they're a part of the team, and part of that team you're sending out to places, specifically to predominantly black institutions, and I think also you have the register to attend a teacher fair at UCA as well, over the year, and they've got one whole hour worth of training to know what they're looking for in an employee?
I think his concern is valid, you might need to do a little bit. Initially-
I think it's concerned valid, you might need to do a little bit, initially do a little more training, roll up maybe quarterly training, then initially, you know, I think it's valid, initially do a little more training to start, to start up, then maybe spread it out.
Absolutely.
That's reasonable, I think that's definitely reasonable.
Let's go down, page one oh four, we start with the emails from your federal programs director, Mrs. Livingston. I don't know you, so tell me if you're here. She's not here. Okay. We have quite a few emails, and she had back and forth with the, with people at the institutions, but no one in particular. And I saw one of the final emails that you've had, you had some correspondence with Dr. George Hertz. Dr. Hertz used to be the chairman of a department at UAPB, now he's at Arkansas Baptist College. Dr. Hertz is a wonderful man, I've known him for probably forty years. But that gives you an indication of how old Dr. Hertz is. He was an educator and I've known him for forty years. And I was a student, and Dr. Hertz was a professor forty years ago, okay? Partnerships require that you have a plan, not that you send emails out and you get some response back from the emails. What you don't have, and I hadn't seen, and perhaps Mr. Keys has it somewhere, the district has it, it just wasn't over said, I did not see an, an MOU or any kind of partnership agreement in any of those one hundred and thirty-five pages.
No, we have none yet. We're looking to develop that this fall.
All right. Listen, y'all are behind the clock on this one. The order was implemented in February, it was, it was signed in February. This is almost eight months later. And eight months, you got nothing really to show but a chain of incongruous emails. Little Rock is thirty minutes up the road. Pine Bluff is thirty minutes down the road. You've got to do some face-to-face stuff and get something in writing. Now, that will be one of the primary objections that we'll submit tonight, who is the attorney for the Justice Department. And I'm telling you, so you'll know, that's going to be an issue for us. Seeking to attend a job fair is simply not enough. Partnerships require plans, common goals. Partnership is an agreement where parties agree to cooperate to advance their, their mutual interest. Your interest is hiring African American teachers. Those black institutions want their graduates to be employed. That's an easy one. But you've got to get something in writing to get a commitment from them, and they've got to in turn do something for you. And we won't tell you how to do it. We're just going to ask you to make a more concerted effort to get it done. Those are some of the primary concerns that our president, after reviewing the documents, expressed to me, and Dr. Steps, who is on our executive committee, expressed to me and some of the issues that I reviewed and saw that were glaring. I commend the superintendent for the job that he is making an effort to do. But there is a lot of work to be done, and you are eight months behind. So, we're not going to sugarcoat anything. We're going to make a conscientious effort to be transparent here for both sides, especially for our side. We've offered to assist you at one time with developing the partnerships with the predominant black institutions that several of our members attended. Although I think, you know, based upon what you have included in your court document, I think Ms. Livingston is doing perhaps the best she can, but it's going to require just a tad bit more. And again, that's an overall view of some of the concerns that were gleaned from the report that we went. We wanted to, on behalf of the Alumni Association, bring to your attention. There are one or two other issues I think that Dr. Steps wants to discuss that might be relevant to this conversation.
Uh, he did a great job, do I have to stand, can I sit?
That's right.
He did a great job of, of over, overdoing most of the questions that I actually had. I just noticed a few more little, little details that I just wanted to ask a question and maybe for later, but I just going to bring it up. I was looking at the salary, I just have a question. Uh, I noticed where in the salary scale, I saw where Ms. Benjamin, I know she's one of the African, African American teachers that has a master's degree. She works a hundred and ninety days a year, and she makes fifty thousand dollars. And then, maybe that has something to do with the Learns Act, I can't, I don't have no idea. And she's making fifty thousand dollars and a master's degree with thirteen years' experience, and she's making the same thing as someone making six years, had six years' experience with the same amount and the same amount of days. Is that something related to the Learns Act?
That is entirely the Learns Act. What the Learns Act says is your level of education doesn't matter. And you can have all the master's degrees and specialists and doctorate.
I just retired a long time, that's what I see. Yes. That is ridiculous.
It is.
Yeah. So, I, I was just wondering about that.
You tell me, she did get a two thousand dollar one-time bump last year.
Yeah, for, uh, all teachers.
That had a certain amount.
One time.
Yes.
So, the ones with the master's degrees, the one with the bachelor's with fifteen hours, and the ones with a one-year experience, all of them fifty thousand.
Somebody that has twelve years' experience, a master's degree, work a hundred and ninety-day contract, and the teacher walking in on their first year is going to make that same amount of money.
And they made it for six years, am I correct? Something like six years straight?
That sounds right.
It depends on the salary scale.
The salary scale is different.
Well, they, yeah, they, they only give me.
They were frozen at whatever step they were on because the Learns Act did away with the steps.
Right.
So, she was already making, she's been here maybe how many years, five, seven?
Uh, she's been here maybe three or four.
And she was making fifty thousand by then?
No, she got a two thousand dollar raise. When the Learns Act implemented, the Learns Act was, if you were already at fifty thousand, you got two thousand dollars more. Or if you were under, so she may have gotten more than two thousand. Whatever she was at under that, they were all bumped up to fifty thousand. So, Learns Act was for that first year, you make, or for that first year of Learns Act, you made two thousand dollars more than what you did last year, or fifty thousand dollars.
Okay.
And that's, that's governed by the nature of the Learns Act.
Okay. And what raised that question, I was looking at coaches making sixty, over sixty thousand, and they only have five thousand in stipends, and they, their salary is that much over than the teachers?
Because they had extended days also, it's not just the stipends.
Like third day minutes?
They have, depending on what they coach, they are at least two-ten.
Okay. Well, I just knew that that was, would be an issue with individuals applying for the positions. That's why it was just opened up when I saw that.
That's just the Learns Act.
Okay. And then I have one more question pertaining to partnerships. Uh, I don't know who to address, just the board. When you say you're establishing partnerships, and I did know that you mentioned that you were going to some type of career fest, are you going to do anything locally that will attract the individuals from other schools such as Philando Baptist, uh, Shorter, and other black institutions that would be locally bringing them here?
Yes, I, I know UAPB is sending people here. Now, I don't know about the others, I'm going to go personally to each one of those colleges. And I want to meet with Dr. Hertz, I'd like to, like to meet with him and have a nice conversation. And we, we're going to see, you know, a lot of, a lot of everything that we do depends on our needs yearly. At the high school, we may need a math teacher, we may need a science teacher. And if we can find out from these universities, we've got this math person going to be a great teacher, and find out early enough, we may be able to attract them to this school. We've got, we're centrally located, we're thirty minutes from every place you really want to be in Central Arkansas. So, that's a great thing that's going for us, and that four-day school week is, it's, it's a major factor. And I would like to use those things and combine it into a package to sell this school to some of these, these applicants.
Okay, and I can understand that, but when I say locally, you've heard me and Boaz say several times that children cannot be what they can't see. And if they are dependent on seeing what they need to see here in England at this school district, you're going to have to bring somebody in that's their color, that they can see that's professional, and not just see every day here like in England School District. Most of the, uh, workers are either in the cafeteria, either sweeping and mopping as custodians because we, you know, and of course, when the public sees it, you know, your picture of the staff has everybody in it. But they don't see that we're going to have one teacher at the elementary school that's black and only three that's here. So, they're, they're going to have to, we're going to have to, when we say partnership, we're going to have to bring some people in here that's professionals that looks like them. So, they, let them understand that they can be something other than cooks and custodians. Nothing wrong with those positions, but if that's all they see, then it would be a problem with them really actually mentally accepting the fact that they can become something other than. And I saw, I've seen through the last few years, our students that did get scholarships, they were so afraid to leave England and go do anything else or move up any higher. A lot of them I've seen turned down scholarships. So, we need to bring in, and I say we because I live in England, I graduated from England. So, it's still we when it comes to me. I would like to see more professionals coming in since they can't see it locally. Bring them in and let them see other professionals in higher positions, and let them see that they can become professionals as well. That's what I say in partnership.
I have another question for Mr. Key before someone else asks.
My name is Joe Rov, I just want to.
Yes, sir.
Ask you a question about the date that you said that the schools was integrated, the date that you said you.
So, the Brown versus Board of Education was in the early fifties. The Department of Justice sued England School District and other schools July ninth, nineteen seventy. And an order was entered in Ju-, August seventeen, nineteen seventy.
That's not correct, sir.
Yeah, no, I, and I couldn't date because that was years before I was born, I just saw the order.
It was segregated in sixty-eight, because that was that.
Yeah, it would have been segregated, yes, sir.
No, it was, I'm, I'm telling you, it was integrated.
Integrated.
Fourteen, fourteen blacks went over in sixty-eight.
Okay. Then.
I can call you names if you want.
So, the order was August seventeen of nineteen seventy, and I, I read it to be that it was, you know, there was completely segregated. But I'm assuming if I, if we go back and research, there was still partial segregation of some sort, or it wasn't fully inter- maybe it wasn't fully integrated. And so, the order said.
What's the partial degree?
Well, it means you had to be fully integrated in your staffing, your facilities, your activities. So, you know, in nineteen seventy, the Department of Justice felt like England was not fully integrated.
Okay, so in sixty, in sixty-eight, the only black teacher that I knew in sixty-eight was in the elementary, was Mr. Jackson. Was no high school teachers, black teachers at all in England in sixty-eight.
Correct.
So, you might want to double check that.
Well, that may have been part of the problem, honestly, maybe.
I know it was part of the problem, I was there with it.
Yeah, I mean, my, my, me given the history was just to try to lay the foundation that this has been an open case for fifty-four years. And, and we're trying to bring it home.
I walked these halls for two years and didn't see nobody but like me, or white like me, or tall like me, or nothing.
Well, listen, Mr. Key, before you sit down, I do have one other question or statement. Should not the district, in your correspondence with these institutions, these three black institutions of higher learning, should not the district make those institutions aware that they are under a court order to develop a recruiting partnership? Wouldn't that be advantageous?
Yeah, I don't see any reason that that would hurt, it may just help incentivize those institutions.
Yes. You know, the voluntary emails back and forth, I think, as the cycle of, um, going nowhere.
From a random understanding, we do that all the time.
Yeah.
It's not a hard thing to do, particularly legally, if it's, you can look into it legally, if it's not binding, it's not, it's not a legal contract. It's just understanding, hey, that's what we're going to do, that's what I'm going to do.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we're doing the military all the time, it's not, because what I'm going to do is what you want to do.
I think that would be advantageous, wouldn't it?
Yeah, it's a good, it's an understanding, two parties are going to do.
Everything's on the table, I think that's fair, sir.
Mr. Nichols has a question as well.
And you can show it to court that two parties have got an understanding.
I'm, I'm with you. Mr. Nichols.
My name is Mr. Nichols, and I'm going to be reverberated. I'm kind of, why I'll be here today, you know, I mean, this happened in nineteen seventy, and why I'll be so far behind, that's all I can ask.
But there's, there's two sides to this, too. As this goes along, we have trouble paying our bills right now, I mean, it's getting tighter and tighter. The tax revenue in England, if you go around England, you see the dollar store, you see all these businesses going up now. We need this revenue to pay our teachers. Our salaries are four hundred thousand dollars a month to pay our teachers. This, these attorneys we have to pay are not cheap. So, we want to do everything we can to get out under this desegregation. So, trust me, we want to meet this desegregation, okay? So, a lot of things were not done right in the past, and we want to do everything we can. So, we are listening to y'all, and Mr. Price, and hopefully you are listening, that we're going to do everything we can to meet this desegregation. So, things, a lot of things were not done right in the past, but we're going to work with them to do that, do what we can, get things right.
I have a question, because I understand that you want to make things right going forward, and we all want to work together, and that's the purpose of having the partnership and the having the MOU in place, correct? But I haven't noticed anyone recording in minutes tonight. How are we doing that?
It's recording.
Okay, perfect, perfect. I just, I just need to make sure that I understand because this is the first one. So, because I didn't want it to be where we're back here at the next public forum, and then there was a miss on any of the public comments that have been brought before you. Because like Mr. Nichols just stated, you know, and we all know, all of this happened way back when, and our goals and our interests and our missions are, are to correct those things, right? Everybody that's involved. We're not here wasting our time, we're here on behalf of representing the residents of England, the youth of England, African Americans, to make sure there's no miscommunication, or misunderstanding, or anything. So, that's why I needed to know if it was being recorded or how we're doing things, you know, now. Because I know prior to months ago, there was some information that we requested, and we were told that it was not available, didn't exist. So, we're just going to make sure that all bases are being covered going forward. And so, we would appreciate that, you know, number one, you guys go ahead and get that MOU, get that taken care of, so we can expedite things, it should not drag out or anything. We have members here of the community that are locally, that are actively involved in the churches and other organizations here. And so, we would like also for some of these African Americans that are here tonight to be involved. We know that you have your process to recruit qualified candidates, but we would like also for some of the public to also be involved as well because that way, there will be no miss. So, since we're working together, let's just try and cover all bases, you know?
In what capacity would you, or would be involved?
Uh, let's see, even if you have a qualified candidate, uh, candidate, you know, the same public notification that you are issuing out to the churches or to the black businesses here, make them aware.
Mr. Price, if I may ask, do you have a community advisory committee that the school has, does the school have a community advisory committee?
No, we do not.
You have four, if you don't mind, would you tell me who those four teachers are that's in the high school, that's African American, and what are those positions that they hold? Say it's four.
We, we, you think, okay? We had Charles Chen. Uh, we had, we hired Darius Clarkson.
Mr. Thompson, Samuel Thompson.
Samuel Thompson. Samuel Thompson.
And Miss Benjamin.
We got Miss Benjamin.
They're all four still here?
Uh, Darius Clarkson decided to go to Texas.
So we don't have four now, we just got three?
Plus Coach Morgan.
Well, yeah.
With Coach Morgan, they're still
But he's counted up here with the administration.
That he teaches.
So y'all count him in the numbers twice? Cause I'm looking at the report that was sent to uh I know he's teaching, I'm just looking at the uh chart that you turned into the Department of Justice, and I just wondered if he was counted, if uh Coach Morgan was counted twice? Or if it was five people?
I have another question, I know you mentioned that the, the district needs the money. So are we kind of banking or relying on the unitary status to be passed to help bring in more funding to support that? Okay.
He's gonna wanna stop paying lawyers, somebody.
And there are, there was state funding tied to some schools and their de-sex status, such as Little Rock, Lasky County, North Little Rock, but there's no money tied to the desegregation status here. So the de-sex status would not affect any funding.
Okay, what would it affect, what is one of the most important things for the DC for you guys?
Ma'am?
The unitary status for the England School District, what is the benefit to you guys? The importance of it, you know, let's say if it was approved today, all conditions were met. How would England High School District, or the School District benefit from that?
I'd have to let that to the board, I just legally is what we're supposed to do, so that's certainly, and then I guess the question is, uh, how you'd have to ask from a board perspective or a district's perspective.
Who would have more African American teachers? And that would be great, but the thing about it, you cannot make anybody come here.
There you go.
Some people love England, I love England, but everybody don't wanna come to a small town and teach, that's just fact. Some people prefer to drive to Little Rock every day, drive to Pine Bluff every day. But if, if they could just sit down and talk to some of the teachers that taught here when I went to school here and taught for twenty and thirty years and retired here. Some of the pe- the teachers that lived here and drove to school one mile a day. That was, oh, that was some fond memories of knowing your teacher and your teacher lived three and four blocks from you. And you felt good that you could go by and talk to the teacher, but that's not like it is today. And like it boils down to, we cannot make any African American, and I consider it black American, I don't consider it African American, cause I didn't come from Africa. But we cannot make black teachers come here, we cannot even make them apply, but we can try. And, and this gotta be a partnership in this town, even everybody in here. You tell somebody, they got some, they may have some openings at England, tell somebody, don't, we don't need to keep it to ourselves. We need to talk about it. We gonna contact the colleges, but still, we need to talk about it.
It's a stigma, that's why. Let me tell you, England School District has a stigma of being racist
That's right.
and not fair to black people.
Yeah.
So that means that the district is going to have to do, uh, make some steps to take away that stigma.
Yes.
So that's why, let me tell you what I know about you. So that is something we're gonna work together.
Yes, we gotta work together on that.
Well, I'm just telling you as a teacher, what I hear. Yeah. And I'm gonna tell you as a resident, we all live from England. We went to England school, I'm not just in here because I'm a spectator. I graduated from England high school. And everything that has been seen, you're singing to the choir, we know, we're from England, that's why we here.
That's right.
So you're saying reach out, not this side of the room. We just want them to do due diligence, that's the right partnership, being all inclusiveness.
That's right.
We all work together, we don't wanna continue to be behind the eight ball, behind the times as bringing up to twenty twenty four. Recruitment requires more than just reaching out and attending those fall recruitment sessions at UAPV, Philander Smith, Arkansas Baptist. Yes, that's well, that's fine and good, because those are our HBCUs.
Right.
We want you to reach out to University of Arkansas Fayetteville, UALR, all of them.
They have black teachers.
That's the thing we want to stop and break. It's not about uh race and color, like I said, you're singing to the choir. I went all through England High School, and this is not about you and me against one another, the Lord against the community. It's not about that, partnership means working together.
That's right.
The community work together, but in order to do that, we gotta have, we have to have a clear understanding and an agreement. Talking is fine, recording is fine, but like Dr. Michael said also, we need some legitimate documentation. Let's just be, you know, clear, fair, and understanding, we're not begging, pleading with anybody to come to England. But what, what, what we do want is it to be advertised correctly, make it known. You never know who may be coming here or who's interested in coming here. If the package is attractive enough and the benefits are attractive enough, you know? And if we're still talking among each other in here and not listening to one another, like I've noticed something going on, that tells me you're disinterested. And if you're disinterested, then you're not, you do not need to even be on the board, I'm just gonna state it like that. Um, we didn't waste our time to come in here. My kids have graduated from the U, the University of Arkansas Fayetteville. I have relatives here, yes, but we're all about, let's put England on the, on the map in a positive way, you know what I'm saying? Let's stop all of this foolishness. We're highly intelligent individuals, and so let's work together. So we can lose some of that language about, we can't beg them, we can't make them, we're not trying to beg anybody, his Spanish, black, white, red, or yellow. Hire them based upon their qualification, but they will not know, I would not know if you didn't put it out there on indeed wherever all of the social media platforms, job sites, yes.
Uh, Dr. Miller?
Yes, and, and to the board and the attorney, I think the, uh, a reasonable question that we gotta answer because we engaged in a little bird walking and, and teacher slang. The, the question was, how does the district benefit by being released from the DC case? And, and it's not a, a matter of personnel on that end, because you get to hire anybody you wanted to hire if you were released from the case. You, the, the question is probably more, is there an economic benefit from being released from the case? And I can answer part of that, you won't have as many attorney fees associated with this particular issue, that much we know. And, and that's probably a primary driving force based upon local revenue and foundation money that helps actually support a school. So I think that's the answer she was seeking, so I'm, I'm sharing it with her, so nobody will leave this room wondering how the district benefits by being released from that case, okay? And, and I think that's, that's
That, and, you know, President Cheek, may I propose this, because we gotta come back in February, and I know we're gonna have a more robust discussion about the partnerships. We may, as a board, discuss what, that, that's a good question, what's the board, that's probably something we're not prepared to answer tonight, but something that we can pu- we can chew on and then articulate that in February, as a board, we feel we want to accomplish this, not just because it's the lawful thing to do, but you know, it's a moral obligation or whatever that might be. So, you know, I think this has all been good feedback, a lot for us to chew on in the next five, six months and come back and, and just grow on this conversation. Cause we'll be back here again, February second, is that second Tuesday of February?
As nice as Mr. Keys is, he is on the clock.
Yeah, I've got, I've got a teaching obligations and have this extra money to give away for bonuses for these teachers all week, recruiting these teachers and
Getting back on the, the learn day, it's, it's strange that same, everyone has, when they pass out, every, every school district in the state of Arkansas starts out at fifty thousand. A lot of school districts, because they don't understand where the funding's coming, instead of having steps in your level, once you hit fifty thousand, there's no raises built in right now, and we can't do it. Because as a board, we're responsible for the finances of the school, so we can't come in and go, okay, step two, you get a two thousand, step three, you get a three thousand. We can't tie ourselves to that until the Department of Ed decides how much money they're gonna actually give us and how that fits into our budget. So actually, and you look at the bad and the good, it's, oh, that's terrible, they don't get this, but in the sense, it levels a playing field, because Carlisle's at fifty, Lono's at fifty, North Little Rock's at fifty, Little Rock's at fifty. So everybody's on the same playing field. But the problem is, and I hate to be the very bad news, the Delta is dying and England is in the Delta. If you pull up statistics on England, you pull up statistics on Stuckard, Clarendon, Derma, McGee, Lake Village, they're all losing students by the day. And I've always told people, this has always been a joke within the board, the, the better your school is, the quicker your town dies, and people's like, how does it make sense? Because when we send over half of our kids off to college and they get degrees, typically they don't come back. But I mean, I, I mean, I'm not saying, I'm not saying you don't blame them, but they wanna go to Conway, it happens, so for us to lure student teachers here, it's kinda tough, you either love the Delta or you don't. Some that love it do come home, some are not gonna come here, and that's just a matter of fact, it don't matter where if you have, if you were a young person, thinking, am I gonna come down and buy two mosquitoes at England? Or am I gonna go to Little Rock, Conway, Marlton, Russellville, they're fixing to go up north. That's where all the jobs are, the extra stuff, the, the nightlife, the fun, I mean, we sell
And places to live.
Huh?
And places
And places to live, yeah.
So what, uh, have you ever partnered with the city of England, trying to convince them to get some affordable housing, and some different housing in here? I'm basing, see, I'm basing on, I'm basing on what uh Ms. Lewis said. People won't come here because they don't know where to live, maybe if you talk to them and, and uh suggest to them
Well, go out and find a construction person, build some housing, you can make some money selling out. I know Barbara is involved in this, are y'all willing to partner with the superintendent, go with him, identify people at these schools and talk to them?
We already offered.
Okay, I'm sure he's gonna take, take you up on it.
We've offered already.
You've got a lot of lights though.
No, you can't go yet. They would at least tell me.
Now.
By the hour. We need to go to the principal's reports, uh, Ms. Tammy?
Um, elementary through September enrollments at three forty-nine, which is the same as August enrollment, but up from July enrollment. And you can see grade levels on there. Um, nine, five through the sixth, kindergarten through second grade took the state Atlas testing screener that is new for K-two students across the state of Arkansas. And I'm gonna be honest and say that was a struggle for kindergarteners. Like, we're in the second, third week of school and we are giving them a computerized state test, and it was a struggle. Uh, but we did it, and um I'm proud of our teachers and all the adults in our building that helped to make that happen. Nine, five, and nine twelve football players started coming over, opening doors, and volleyball uh players are face painting, our kids absolutely love that, Friday is their favorite day. And part of it is because they get to see those football players and the athletes of the district come over. The tenth through the twenty-third is our book fair, and then on the twenty-third, we will have parent-teacher conferences from two to six. I included some pictures uh from throughout the month, and then I just said, stay attached newsletter for September, October, this is the newsletter that went home with students and was on our Facebook. Um, I just did a quick little note to parents, and then you can see our upcoming events for October.
High school, the fourth?
Right, the total number of students at the high school is two hundred and seventy-four. Uh, tennis, volleyball, football are in full s- full swing with multiple games around each week. Uh, August the twenty-ninth and the thirtieth, we had the National Guard and the Army come in and visit with our seniors. Something new we started this year is the first Tuesday of each month, we have College Readiness Day, where we're encouraging the staff and the students to wear college shirts so we can get those conversations started. Uh, like Ms. Steps pointed out earlier about, you know, people coming in to see us, we do have a college and career fair on October the second, which everybody is invited to the Any questions for the high school?
The next item is, uh, due to approve the village for the November election, currently at point zero four six.
Make a motion to approve the parent miller. Most of us got teeny second. Take my Mr. B, all of the first of the eye.
Next is a petition for student transfers, we have a gentleman who wants to transfer his three children into the district, he lives in Scott, his uh, children are, have been released uh from Plaskey County Special School District. Just take a look at.
Four, three, four, five, four, five, six, seven.
Yes, I would recommend allowing him to come in.
Eight, nine, ten, and twelve.
Second list of her class, class size.
We didn't need to do that.
Oh, wrong, that's not receiving. Yeah, that's resident district, we're not receiving, no, that's We're in a receiving school. So we'll make a motion, I hate turning on keys, I'll make a motion, motion by Scott Cheek, it's seven, three to two. Second by Mr. Trish Card Lewis, all of the first of the eye. Pose, seven.
Next is uh approve personnel policies, uh, last month, we approved the updates, but we never really approved the personnel policies themselves. Uh, we've got them here, they're just basically the same ones, they've just been updated.
They're all model policy.
They're all model policy, yes.
Someone make a motion, Mr. Bees, he's second. Second by Mr. Trish Card Lewis, all of the first of the eye. Pose, seven.
Uh, next is a quote from Mark's Machinery and More for the Agri Grant, we got a, a Agri Grant of just over twenty-nine thousand dollars. Uh, it has to be appropriated earmarked at least by the end of the month. We found this one place that, uh, it's Mark's Machinery, that we get all sorts of saws and things like that, it's a modernization grant. And we got right now a quote for twenty-three thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents for
Are we gonna use a lot of this stuff, we just gonna look at it?
Uh, we're gonna use it in our ag program.
Hope so. I think a lot of stuff will be reduced to put out where they can use it.
We'll make a motion to approve the Mark's Machinery and More for Agri Grant. Make sure I, Mr. Bees, he's second. All of the first of the eye. Pose, lots of
Uh, next is payment to Central Arkansas Truck and Trailer. Uh, we had to have some work done, parts, repair labor, diagnostic. And the, uh, it's five thousand, eighty-nine dollars and twenty-three cents.
Motion on Mr. Bees, he's second. Second on the second, all of the first of the eye.
H is approved, payment to Great Minds, um, it's four thousand, seven hundred fifty-two dollars and ninety-six Eighth is approved, payment to Great Minds, um, it's four thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars and ninety cents, and this is wit and wisdom for elementary.
Is it, uh, come from federal money?
Uh, is this, is this federal?
Of course, I can just have the declining number was not even here.
Okay, I knew it was something.
Wanna make a motion?
Make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Sullivan, he's second.
Second.
Second by Trish Carter Lewis, all the first of the eye? Oppose, seven, oh.
Uh, next is, uh, payment to I Station in the amount of two thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars. It's I Station man.
Wanna make a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Beatty, second. Second by Scott, two dollars, first of the eye? Oppose, seven, oh.
Next is a payment to Wilson Language Training Corporation in the amount of four thousand, eight hundred and six dollars. This is for our, uh, Foundation Student Consumables, uh, Wilson is our dyslexia.
That's federal money, I know, thanks. Wanna make a motion?
I'm gonna.
Motion by Trish Carter Lewis, twenty seconds. Second by Mr. Beatty, all the first of the eye? Oppose, seven, oh.
The last thing is payment to Dunne School District for a turf tank rental. What this, this machine paints the fields, we're gonna use it to paint our parking lots, um, basically if it's on the ground and it needs to be painted, this machine can do it. And what I, when it first came to me, it, our half of it was gonna be about seven thousand dollars. I told, uh, Coach Anderson, there's no way I'm spending seven thousand dollars to paint a field and paint parking lots. He said he would raise half of it between him, the football team and the baseball team, they've raised their half of it, our half comes to three thousand, five hundred dollars. And that was.
Still have seven thousand dollars up there.
Right.
What about this one behind it? Seventeen, one.
These are the two, these are the two that they raised, one that came from baseball, one came from, came from football. And we talked about this and not splitting up POs, so I wanted to be a- above board on that. They each went to work, did their fundraising for that, this, when I talked to them, this was back in, uh, May.
How'd they raise it?
It's a rental, it's a rental.
Rental from here?
Uh, I guess it's a, the turf, is this?
Turf tank.
Uh, turf tank is what it's called.
They buying it or renting?
We're renting it, we're renting, we're splitting the rental, the total rental price with Dunus.
Oh.
They can use it out here already, cause I done seen it, it makes a pretty good lot there.
We're gonna use it to repaint our parking lot, relight.
You can paint your paint football field and paint your paint parking lot, it's two different bills, I didn't know that whole bit painted, was it?
That's what they were telling us when others, when they were demoing.
How much money they love it?
Thirty-five hundred dollars.
That ain't bad though, field and parking lot.
They don't paint, that's just.
A lot of paint comes with that, yes.
Oh, that's with paint?
Yes.
That ain't bad with paint.
That's, that's what Coach Anderson told me, comes with the paint.
A lot of, we use a lot of paint, we should go get buckets and buckets and buckets of paint.
I don't, I don't say that, I said, I'm shit.
I really don't like paint. Okay, so we're voting, how much? Thirty-five, thirty-five.
Come back and give us this more.
Okay, what about sales?
They say five thousand.
Yeah, it's really fair, it's fair with it.
You know later on, sometime they'll come back.
You know, and Coach, they deliver, man.
This is, this, this.
They can't, they can't, they can't get right number players out on the field.
This is the number, this is the number that sent to us from Dunus. Uh, they sent us baseball, uh, seventeen, twenty-seven, fifty, which they raised, they sent football seventeen, twenty-seven, fifty, which they raised. And they sent us. Thirty-five.
Take basketball.
Yes.
Football coach.
Can I just throw something in there?
Cause this one's worth your time.
There, I see three different POs, so that total will be able to handle that.
I agree, POs, that's an odd issue.
Let me do my math. It's gonna be totaled to six thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five dollars. They came up, baseball came up to seventeen, twenty-seven, fifty, football came up to seventeen, twenty-seven.
Okay, so we're only, so we're only really doing the parking.
Football.
We're, yes, we're only, yeah, we're only looking.
We got, we got approved to spend sixty-nine, fifty-five, but they brought in.
They brought in thirty-four and fifty-five dollars.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So we've got to pay three, thirty-five.
So why don't we, why don't we really get a parking lot, is it cheaper to get somebody to do our parking lot and bypass the parking lot?
Yeah, we don't have anything to do on the weekends before.
I'm just talking about as far as, no, there's people getting, there's people coming to pay parking lot.
Well, I think that the machine here though.
Yeah, it is. Nation, we wanna do the part on the road, they don't raise it for themselves.
I know that breaks the whole thing.
Anything you think? Do you want it?
We can't today. Now, how are we gonna do this every year?
Well, we know this year, see how.
They're gonna start washing cars. That's a lot of money, how do you, how many times are we gonna pay for one?
How long are they gonna rent this?
It would cost you thirty-five bucks. I guess it's over, you should have bought the paint, it probably costs you about seven, eight hundred, a paint year for all that. Yeah, probably a paint.
How long are we gonna keep it?
Uh, the duration of football season, and we'll be, see, we're splitting.
This guy go back and forth, goes back and forth.
And who gonna be in charge of doing the paint?
That's Coach Anderson, he's the one that headed up this.
Who's got time to let it back forth between Dunus and.
Yes, he gonna keep him.
And then who's gonna, what's gonna, who's gonna take care of the, the upkeep, when you go get him, come back and go.
I don't know, man.
And it was right.
Oh, it's a rental.
You set this sucker on the football field and push a button, walk off, it makes the whole field, picks numbers.
Same difference.
It don't touch nothing. I know, I'm just saying, you sit up in the corner and you push a button and it runs everything.
It does the whole field.
It does the whole field, you go, you leave.
Same way with the parking lot, you, once you design it out, you hit the button and you go home.
I guess I haven't figured it out.
Okay.
Sixty-nine, fifty-five.
Sixty-nine.
All right, right.
They only raise half of it.
I didn't see.
It's right there.
Motion by Mr. Peter, he's second. Second by Ms. Mason, all the favors of the eye? Oppose, seven, oh. There it is, or six-one. I don't want the personnel. I mean, I haven't, I, I got personnel.
We don't?
I make that motion.
Let's go. Let's go.
Second by Ms. Tucker, all the first of the eye?
Why that dog, that's a stinkin'. She gotta go back.
Oh, yes, yes, we have one issue.
Oh, whoa, 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 you don't pull back, you don't pull back your phone.
I take back my.
She made a call. Okay, she pulled back, Mr. Trish pulled back about to turn Jerry.
No!
Go on, hit the wood. Glad of first, can't handle second.
Take it back, man.
What are we doing?
All right, we want that, personnel. Seven, eight, he said, damn near.
And my, all my dates.
Okay, I'm seeking a motion to accept resignation of the elementary nurse, and make it October fifteenth.
I make that motion, I fastly make that motion.
Trish Carter Lewis, he's second. Second by Ms. Mason, all the favors of the eye? Seven, oh, someone make a motion.
I make that motion to Jerry.
Trish Carter Lewis, second.
Second.
Second. All the favors of the eye?
Couple of that.
Oppose, seven, oh.